Good morning. Sorry for the delay today. It must be a rain delay day. I'm going to call this meeting, and I'm sure it's entirely my fault. This meeting of the Monroe County Board of Commissioners, it's Wednesday, October 26. And all three commissioners are present, and we will begin with the public statement read by Commissioner Jones. Thank you.
We, the Monroe County Board of Commissioners, renew our commitment to welcome and protect the rights of all people, regardless of age, race, color, creed, disability, sexual orientation, gender, gender identity, marital status, economic status, and national origin. And we affirm the right of every person to live peacefully and without fear. And we will fight and resist at every step discrimination and harmful policies, whatever their source. We also stand in support of our county public school systems, both RBB and MCCSC.
Thank you so much. And next, we have our proclamation for Runaway Prevention Month.
Whereas the future well-being of our nation is dependent on the value we place on our young people. And the prevalence of runaway and homelessness among youth is staggering. The study suggesting that every year, 4.2 million people ages 13 to 25 endure some form of homelessness. And runaway youth are often expelled from their homes, have experienced trauma, struggle to meet basic needs, and are at increased danger of falling into high-risk situations, including human trafficking, and may be ineligible or unable to access adequate medical or mental health resources. And the Youth Services Bureau of Monroe County is working to raise awareness, support, and resources for young people in our community. Effective programs supporting runaway youth and assisting youth and their families in providing safe and stable homes succeed because of partnerships created among families, youth-based advocacy organizations, community-based human service agencies, law enforcement schools, faith-based organizations, and businesses. And if we all work together, we can prevent the situations that compel youth to run away from home and encourage all citizens to appreciate the role that we all can play in advocating for and providing safe alternatives to this vulnerable population of young people. And the National Runaway Safeline is honoring November as National Runaway Prevention Month to raise awareness of the issues facing runaway and homeless youth and educate the public about solutions and the role they can play in ending youth homelessness. Now, therefore, we, the Monroe County Board of Commissioners, proclaim November 2022 as Runaway Prevention Month in Monroe County, proclaim this 26th day of October 2022.
All right. Thank you so much, Commissioner Giffens. I appreciate that. Good morning.
Good morning, commissioners. I am Bridgette Nasby. I'm actually the new State Safe Place Director for Indiana Youth Services Association. So after five and a half years at Youth Services Bureau, I just wanted to thank you again for your support over the years. I was there and your continued support of the Safe Place program as I move into my new direction at IYSA and for Monroe County being such a great example of how we can support our youth and our youth in crisis. And I wanted to introduce our new Shelter Outreach and Safe Place Coordinator.
Good morning. My name is Cassidy McCammon, and I am the new Shelter Outreach and Safe Place Coordinator for Youth Services Bureau of Monroe County. Commissioners, I just wanted to sincerely thank you for your continued support of National Runaway Prevention Month this November with this proclamation. National Runaway Prevention Month provides awareness and support for youth that have run away and/or are experiencing unstable housing or even homelessness. This issue impacts roughly 2 million youth nationally and 16,000 youth just in the state of Indiana. I would also like to thank you for your continued support of Youth Services Bureau of Monroe County, which serves these youth through our Basic Center Program, counseling, Safe Place, and our prevention efforts. In addition to this proclamation, we plan to have the courthouse glow green for the month of November. We will also be facilitating a social media campaign in conjunction with the National Runaway Safeline to educate and bring awareness to this important topic. The Monroe County Library will also be hosting a display in their Ellisville team space, as well as hosting an event over conflict management at their main branch. Thank you so much for this, for your continued support of our community's youth. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Welcome to Monroe County Government. And Ms. Nasby, congratulations. Excellent. Great news. All right. With that, we are going to turn to department updates. We will begin with the Health Department. It's Hewitt is here. Good morning.
Good morning, commissioners. I'll be doing the update for the Health Department today. I'm Kathy Hewitt, and I'm the Population Health and Outreach Manager for the Health Department. And I'm going to give you a quick update on COVID and monkeypox. So for the COVID update through 10/22, Monroe County remains in the green community level, as does most of the state. We only have eight counties in the yellow community level right now and one in the high-risk orange. So that's mainly because our hospitalizations have remained low within the last month. So, but with the weather getting colder and the holiday season coming up, we want to really encourage everybody to be prepared and ensure that your family and you are up to date on your COVID vaccinations. And one thing to know is the CDC has recently updated their COVID up-to-date definition. So now you are considered to be up to date with your COVID-19 vaccines if you have completed a COVID-19 vaccine primary series and have received the most recent booster dose for which the CDC recommends for you. And you can find that information on a tool at the CDC website. So the CDC now recommends that people ages five and older receive one updated bivalent booster if it has been at least two months since their last COVID vaccine, whether that was the primary series or an original or monovalent booster dose. The new bivalent boosters are designed to protect against the dominant Omicron BA5 and BA4 subvariants in addition to the first strain of COVID that came from China in 2019. Now, the BA5 variant is currently makes up about 60% of the circulating vaccine virus, and BA4 makes about 12%. And two splinters of the BA5 have been broken out because they're getting large enough, and they make up about 18% additional infection. So they're expecting that this booster dose will provide a lot of coverage. So for those 18 and older who are unable to get the bivalent booster dose, the FDA has recently approved a monovalent Novavax as our first booster dose that can be given six months after they finish the primary vaccine. So, and remember that it takes at least about two weeks to build up enough protection after you get vaccinated. So remember to plan accordingly so you can be protected before the holidays start. So you can get your vaccination at the Monroe County Public Health Clinic by making an appointment at 812-353-3244. The Indiana Department of Health will also host a mobile clinic on October 31st from 8:00 to 4:00 p.m. and on November 1st from 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. at the Sherwood Oaks Church. The site will accept walk-ins, but you can save time by registering and making an appointment at www.rshot.in.gov. You can also find other sites in the county to get vaccinations by also looking at that website as well which vaccines are given at which site, so it can save you a lot of time and effort. So for monkeypox, monkeypox cases are continuing to decline both nationally and in Indiana. And in the Indiana Preparedness District 8, of which Monroe County is a part, there have been five cases within the district, and that's made out of seven different counties. So overall, in Indiana, there have been 246 cases within the state. So beginning next week, you can get vaccinations for monkeypox at the Monroe County Public Health Clinic by appointment. You can also get checked to see whether you can get tested there as well. So again, that number is 812-353-3244.
Great. Wow, lots of great information this morning. Thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Giffens?
It's, it's true that people can get their flu shot at the same time as the booster. Is that correct?
Yes, absolutely. You can get your shots both at the same time, and many people have tried it, have noticed no difference at all. So.
Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't. Thank you.
And that is a good reminder to get the flu shot this year as well, because.
Absolutely. They're expecting the flu shot to be a much heavier than in the last few seasons because we're all moving back to pre-pandemic activities. So they're expecting to see a heavier flu season. So that would be a smart reminder to do.
Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate you being here. All right. Next, we have Ms. Ridge from Highway. Good morning.
Good morning. I just wanted to do a small PowerPoint presentation for a project that we've been working on for a couple of years now. So I think IT has that PowerPoint to put on. We've been working with the BANA Group, which is Bachelor Area Neighborhood Association, for our roundabout at Rogers Street and Gordon Pike. The commissioners put into their general obligation bond a couple of years ago, financing to, for a kind of a beautification for this roundabout. And then we'll continue that type of theme with our next roundabout that we will construct at Bachelor Drive with our Fullerton Pike Phase 3 project. So, IT?
And while you're putting the PowerPoint up, can you also get our captions onto this monitor here, please? Thank you.
We don't. How was the PowerPoint?
I sent it to your Zoom, and I got an email back that said that it would be ready.
Give us one minute. We're getting it pulled up now.
Okay. One. Oh, there you go. Okay.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
You can go to the next slide. So how this began, we developed a beautification committee consisted of the county commissioners, highway personnel, residents, and the Bachelor Area Neighborhood Association. The commissioners budgeted a roundabout landscaping project and the general obligation bond, showing the commitment to build a landscaping project that the residents could appreciate and be aesthetically appealing. We hired Hitchcock Design Firm to help with the design. Many meetings were held, and of course, this happened through COVID, so we had many Zoom meetings. And great ideas were shared by all. Next slide. The project went out for bid in the spring of 2022, and it was not awardable due to the cost. The Highway Department decided to put together the project piece by piece. So we worked, reached to different vendors, we'd electrical services, and met with landscaping personnel, stone companies, while trying to still maintain the concept that the committee had worked really hard to put together. So the slide that you see right now is what we had originally come up with, with the architectural firm. Next slide. This is kind of our final results, the drawing that we worked with, Nature's Way. We will have a contract later on the agenda moving forward with this project. It has, we still were able to maintain the irrigation system, the stonework, the flowers, the grass. We do, we were able to keep some of the lighting into the central location. Go to the next slide. The next slides just kind of tell you some of the plants and the, that we will be using throughout the roundabout. You can go to the next slide. The next one is the type of different grass that we will be using. And I'm not a, I'm not a flower person. I'm terrible with it. I can't grow anything. So I do not know the names of each of these. They were put together through our, with our landscaping expert. As you can see, on the next slide shows all the different variations of the colors that we'll be using, and then also different blooms of different times of year. So it'll be a continuous, great look for the roundabout year-round. And then the next slide is the stonework that we'll be placing into the center of the roundabout. I just want to thank everybody that has worked on this project, the Monroe County Commissioners, for putting it into their bond, the council for approving that bond and that project, the residents that's worked really hard with us throughout this. We've never put together a landscaping theme, but I think it's gonna, it's gonna be great working with Hitchcock Design Group, our county highway engineer, and moving forward with Nature's Way, Baby Stone, Electric Plus to put this all together. We do have representative from Nature's Way. We want to thank them for working with us. So yeah, and we'll be able to move on to the next step.
Great. Thank you so much, Ms. Ridge. And I'll note, just for the record, that that's going to be item M on our agenda today. Thank you. And a huge thanks to the folks in that Neighborhood Association, BANA, for all their help and, and hard work on this too.
I don't know if anybody was going to be on Zoom to talk about it. They'd mentioned it.
Yeah. So, but we do appreciate their hard work as well. But we'll talk more about that and item M. Does any other department have an update for us today? Okay. With that, we will move on to public comments. And again, TSD, if you could put our subtitles up, our closed captioning up on our screen, that would be appreciated. And this is time for folks to want to offer general commentary on items that are not on our agenda. Time limit of three minutes. At 2 minutes and 30 seconds, you will hear a tone, which means you have 30 seconds to wrap up your commentary. Good morning, Mr. Ramsey.
Good morning, commissioners, distinguished staff. I was, first want to say thank you, Ms. Ridge, for all your work on that beautification project. It's one of the things the chamber has been advocating, that work does not go unnoticed. Let's start my comments today with commending this, this body for its joint listening session with the County Council on the Use of ARPA Funds. These American Rescue Funds are a real difference maker for a one-time investment for our community. Thank you for your thoughtful, deliberate, and transparent process that provided ample opportunity for public input. I was one of the 76 individuals willingly filled out the survey. There were multiple valuable projects and uses on that list. One can make a real argument for the need of a number of them. The chamber wants to reiterate the support for rural transit and infrastructure improvement projects. These priorities serve the business community and the residents as a whole for transformative improvements in quality of life. The next, the chamber remains excited about that next city-county meeting on the convention center expansion being held November 9th. We're committed to that expansion with a push for continued talks to make this a reality. Since 2017, as you know, those funds have been collected for this sole purpose. One of the areas we appreciate seeing is real collaboration between the city and the county on this project. This body has made that a commitment. This is how sound, responsive government should function. And finally, we are two weeks, less than two weeks away from election season. The chamber is teaming up with the Indiana National Organization for Women with a myriad of other organizations to push for voter turnout, vote where you sleep. We have these posters and plugging the free Uber ride to the polls. We have window clings as well and some other signs for the yard. If anybody wants that, we would love if you to come by the chamber office. We are located on the southeast corner of Rogers and Sixth Street. These signs are in our atrium area. You have no contact with any of the chamber personnel. Just grab what you need. This is also a good chance to plug our chamber advocacy. We have on our campaign coverage questionnaires, interviews, links to the women voter forums, and even more avenues you can learn about the candidates. And please, everyone, go vote. Thank you very much for your time. It's much appreciated.
Thank you, Mr. Ramsey. Appreciate your commentary. Does anyone else have public comment?
Good morning. My, my mic's live, so are you ready for my comment? In honor of Runaway Prevention Month, I wanted to bring attention to a web app that we have helped develop with collaboration from Youth Services that shows a lot of the safe place locations in Monroe County and some adjacent counties as well. It received excellence in GIS in 2021, and it also has a dual map feature on there as well that takes you right to BT transit maps where they show kind of how their routes are live. It's really neat. But the coolest part is all Bloomington transits are safe places as well. And kind of working with Youth Services, one of the highest use cases are actually kids leaving the home, and that's not necessarily where the safe place locations are. So some of their closest spots are bus stops and to get on a transit. So we created a dual map feature, and I just wanted to bring attention to that. It's linked on our GIS Division webpage on the county. So it just goes another step further of how you can really get successful things out there and more resources to the public when you work in collaborative measures across the board. So, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Any other public comment? Okay. See, now we'll come back to our agenda. The next item, please.
Move approval of minutes from October 12th, 2022.
Second.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any comments, corrections, or edits? No. Excellent. All those in favor of approving the minutes for October 12th, 2022 signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries 3-0. Next item, please.
Move approval of claims to account accounts payable October 26th, 2022, and payroll for October 21st, 2022.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and we have Ms. Williams here from the auditor's office to tell us all about it. Good morning.
Good morning. So accounts payable, the grand total was $5,208,533.77. And then for payroll, it was $1,754,038.12.
Great. Thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Giffens?
No.
Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't.
All right. Any public comment on this item? Raise your hand on the Zoom screen or come to the podium in the NatU Hill Room. Seeing none, all those in favor of approving accounts payable October 26th, 2022, and payroll October 21st, 2022, signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries 3-0. I will note for the record, we've received a report from the treasurer, and it is for September 2022. And with that, we will move on to new business, please.
Move approval of Pitney Bowes contract for court services. Fun name, county general, fun number 1,000, in an amount of $296.62 per month for 60 months.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and we have Ms. Abraham joining us. Good morning.
Good morning. In the past few years, Court Services has shared the postage machine with the clerk's office, and our lease is set to expire the end of this year. The clerk has informed me that they wish now to go out on their own and get their own postage machine. So I am in the process of getting, obviously, a postage machine for Court Services. We also share with the probation, the public defenders. I do run postage for all three of these entities. I did meet with the different companies, and Pitney Bowes had the best contract and the cheapest that would fit in my budget. So I am asking the commissioners to approve the contract that I can move forward, and this will go into effect in January, but I have to get it in place prior to the end of the year.
Great. Thank you so much, Ms. Abraham. Comments, questions? Commissioner Giffens?
No.
Thank you. Commissioner Jones?
No.
Any public comment on this item? Raise your hand on the Zoom screen or come to the podium in the NatU Hill Room. Seeing none, we will come back for a vote. All those in favor of approving the Pitney Bowes contract for Court Services signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries 3-0. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item, please.
Move approval of Sound Management LLC Digital Advertising Service Agreement. Fun name, election, fun number 1215, in an amount not to exceed $1,500.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Ms. Martin, good morning.
Good morning. As of last night, we had 4,059 early voters. The first day of early voting, we had roughly 300. Last night, we had over 500. So it is increasing, but we do want to encourage you to get out and vote. So the first thing on your agenda is the digital advertising. This is like if someone was on their phone looking up something, it would pop at the top as a ribbon that says "Vote", and that's all this one is. It's just to remind people to vote in a location.
Great. Thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Giffens?
I just wanted to clarify it on both this and the next item. It says payment type in cash, and I know the county never pays anything.
No.
That just means it, it wishes to pay by credit card, right?
Right. We're paying by check.
Yeah. Yeah. Thank you. Excellent. Commissioner Jones?
Thank you for doing this.
No problem.
Yeah, it's a good idea. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Raise your hand on the Zoom screen or come to the podium in the NatU Hill Room. All right. Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the Digital Advertising Service Agreement with Sound Management signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries 3-0. Next item, please.
Move approval of Sound Management LLC Radio Advertisement Agreement. Fun name, clerk, fun number 1215, in an amount of $1,485.
Second.
We have a motion, and we have a second. Ms. Martin?
Okay, so this is plays on a person's radio. It starts about 6:00 a.m. in the morning, and it runs till 7:00 p.m. at night. We're buying a package deal of 45 times. So during the election season from 10:13 until, you know, November the 3rd, it will play 45 times in the high peak travel when someone should be in their car.
Great. Thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Giffens?
No, thank you.
Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't.
Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Raise your hand on the Zoom screen or come to the podium in the NatU Hill Room. Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the agreement with Sound Management for radio advertisement signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries 3-0. Thank you, Ms. Martin.
Thank you.
Next item, please.
Move approval of Blue Stone Tree Service Agreement. Fun name, county general, fun number 1,000, in an amount of $580.
Second.
We have a motion, and we have a second. Mr. Kreider, good morning.
Good morning, commissioners. Richard Kreider, Fleet and Facilities Manager. This request is to approve the contract with Blue Stone Tree for the removal of two tree stumps and chip cleanup at the Monroe County Government Center for the amount of $580.
Thank you. Comments, questions? Commissioner Giffens? I think this, this is a result of two trees that really had to be taken out, right? And so, it's just the final part of it.
Yep.
Yeah. Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't. Thank you.
And given that we have plans to do a little resurfacing in that lot, we're going to replace those trees, but they may not be in exactly the same place. So we're going to wait a bit to, to choose the location and the species, I guess, which, which we have some great options. And then, of course, the potential for ARPA funding to really change that parking lot would be important as well. So really good, sad to lose trees, but very good movement forward. I think this is all happening at the right time. So thank you for that. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Raise your hand on the Zoom screen or come to the podium in the NatU Hill Room. Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the agreement with Blue Stone Tree Services signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries 3-0. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item, please.
Move approval of Baby &amp; Me Tobacco-Free Program Service Agreement. Fun name, N-A-C-C-H-O, I'm not going to try to pronounce that. Fun number 8130, in an amount of $580.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Ms. Hewitt, tell us all about, please.
This item is basically a continuation of a contract that we've had with Baby &amp; Me Tobacco-Free for many years now. With note, it's no longer supported by the Indiana State Department of Health, so we're using a nature grant that we had gotten previously for the Baby &amp; Me Tobacco-Free program, so we're continuing to do it. So.
Great. Thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Giffens?
I'm really glad we have this type of program in our.
I'm really glad we have this type of program in our county, thank you for always going after these funds.
Yeah, for sure, Commissioner Jones?
Yes, I agree, and this is something we've seen frequently over the years, so.
All right, thank you for working on this. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Raise your hand on the Zoom screen or come to the podium in the Nat U Hill Room. Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the Baby and Me Tobacco-Free Programs Service Agreement signify by saying aye. Aye, motion carries three zero, next item, please.
Move approval of the ratification of the twenty twenty-two dash twenty twenty-three Title X Contract Agreement Renewal. Fun name, Futures Title X, Fun Number eighty-one twenty-six, in an amount of one hundred seven thousand, five hundred ninety-two dollars.
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second, I don't know, Ms. Hewitt, if you're here to speak on this one as well? Thank you.
I apologize, I should have looked further down on the agenda. Yes, this is just the ratification of two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three Title X Contract Agreement Program. So the contracts already been signed, it's just here to be ratified today, so.
Right, thank you so much, we've seen this before as well and really appreciate all the work on getting this funding. Comments, questions, Commissioner Gissens?
No, I just want to point out that this funding supports the Futures Family Planning Clinic and the staff. So again, kudos to our health department.
Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't, thank you.
Great, let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Raise your hand on the Zoom screen or come to the podium in the Nat U Hill Room. Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the ratification of the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three Title X Contract Agreement, signify by saying aye. Aye, motion carries three zero, thank you. All right, next item, please.
Move approval of the Anthem twenty twenty-three Contract Renewal. Fun name, Self Insurance, Fun Number four seven zero zero.
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second, Ms. Sensensteine, please tell us all about it.
Good morning, Commissioners, so this item includes quite a few documents for your signature. So the first one is the administrative car or the renewal form, which is the same as last year. And then the administrative costs, the stop-loss agreement. And then finally, the three plan summaries for all three of our plans, which did include an increase slightly of about two point eight percent for all of those plans. And then next week, I should have an amendment for you for travel and lodging services, which will include abortion.
Thank you for working on all of this, this is very complicated.
It is, yeah.
It's complicated for individuals, but it's gotta be super complicated for you. Appreciate you, I know Angie Purdy worked on this as well and
Yes, Angie is a great resource, yeah.
Thank you all, yeah, it's hard to get through this stuff. Comments, questions, Commissioner Gissens?
Yes, I'm glad that the increases kept under three percent this year, it's.
Yeah, Commissioner Jones?
Yeah, I just really do appreciate you for dealing with all of this. It's something I don't even like to think about.
Most people don't, you're right. And this is our county's open enrollment time, so this is perfect timing.
It is, yes, so hopefully everyone listening or in this room has thought about it and has done what they need to do.
Thank you so much. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Raise your hand on the Zoom screen or come to the podium in the Nat U Hill Room. Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the Anthem twenty twenty-three Contract Renewal signify by saying aye. Aye, motion carries. Thank you so much, we'll see you next week. Next item, please.
Move approval of Snedeker Construction, Inc. Addendum Service Agreement for Carst Farm Park Trailhead. Fun name, non-reverting parks, Fun Number eleven seventy-nine, in an amount of twenty-eight thousand, five hundred dollars.
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second. Do we have Ms. Whitmer on Zoom, perhaps? Oh. It is pretty, yeah, I can, I can talk about this because it's pretty straightforward, which is just, all we're doing is changing the date. The amount actually shouldn't, I sent a note about this, there shouldn't be an amount on here because we already approved this amount. So just for the record, this is not a new amount, this is a reiteration of an amount we already agreed to. But all we're doing is extending the deadline and this is due to supply chain issues. So I feel confident moving forward, if you all do.
Definitely.
Okay, yes, all right, let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Raise your hand on the Zoom screen or come to the podium in Nat U Hill. Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the agreement with Snedeker Construction and Addendum Service Agreement for Carst Farm Park Trailhead signify by saying aye. Aye, motion carries three zero, next item, please.
Move approval of Oser Surveying and Mapping LLC Surface Agreement. Fun name, Surveyors Corner Perpetuation, Fun Number twelve oh two, in an amount not to exceed twenty-four thousand dollars.
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second, Mr. Mr.
Hello, good morning again, I forgot to introduce myself, my name is Tronan Wright-Ranoff from the Monroe County Surveyor. We're seeking approval of a professional service perpetuation agreement with Oser mapping and surveying. This comes out of our section Corner Perpetuation Fund, which is a non-reverting fund. And we're going to be perpetuating four contiguous sections in Indian Creek Township as outlined in Exhibit A. And we're looking for your approval and I'll open it up for any questions.
Comments, questions, Commissioner Gissens?
No.
Commissioner Jones?
No.
I don't have any either, let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Raise your hand on the Zoom screen or come to the podium in the Nat U Hill Room. Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the agreement with Oser Surveying and Mapping signify by saying aye. Aye, motion carries three zero.
Thank you so much.
Next item, please.
Move approval of the Agreement for Right-of-Entry Regarding the Centerstone Property.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, Mr. Cockrell, tell us all about it, please.
Yes, and this is part of kind of a longer thing that you've looked at already with as far as the city going to the planning through the, so for the redevelopment of the old hospital site. And so part of that involves the centerstone building and putting some more connectivity around that building and also includes some changes to the parking and everything. In order to do that, they need to get onto our property and do some work. This right-of-entry allows them to do that. We did have them include in this that any work they had that they were going to do would also have to be approved by our LSE Centerstone. So this is all part of that project and just the next step as we move forward.
Right, thank you so much, comments, questions, Commissioner Gissens?
Is there a timeline on this?
It begins January one and ends July thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, that's their timeline.
Eighteen months, right, thank you. Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't.
Any comments from the public? Raise your hand on the Zoom screen or come to the podium in the Nat U Hill Room. Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the Agreement for Right-of-Entry Regarding Centerstone Properties signify by saying aye. Aye, motion carries, next item, please.
Move approval of NDOT Amendment Number Three for Bicentennial Pathway Project. Fun name, Cumulative Capital Trails, Fun Number eleven thirty-eight, in an amount of two hundred ninety-seven thousand, two hundred twenty-five dollars.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, Ms. Ridge.
Good morning again. Good morning. So this project that we've had has been ongoing. So we have exhausted the original POs that were for this project. So NDOT is amending the agreement to include an additional two hundred and one thousand, fifty-five dollars for preliminary engineering, an additional ninety-six thousand, one hundred and seventy dollars for right-of-way acquisition reimbursement. It's eighty-twenty funds and we will submit the invoices and get reimbursement for those.
Excellent, thank you so much, comments, questions, Commissioner Gissens?
I really appreciate Ms. Ridge getting every cent she can for the county projects.
Commissioner Jones?
Yeah, it's certainly a benefit to the whole community to have our trail system and thank you for working on it.
Yeah, appreciate that, I know that this project has gone long.
I think it started in two thousand nine.
And then we called it the Bicentennial Project Pathway out of all optimism and not expecting what came after, so. But I appreciate that you've not let this go, that you've continued to pursue it and it really makes a big difference, so. Getting closer, we're getting there, looking forward to the ribbon cutting. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Raise your hand on the Zoom screen or come to the podium in the Nat U Hill Room. Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the NDOT Amendment Number Three for the Bicentennial Pathway Project signify by saying aye. Aye, motion carries, next item, please.
Move approval of Bean Longest Enough Small Structure Inspections. Fun name, Cumulative Bridge, Fun Number eleven thirty-five, in an amount of one hundred thirty-five thousand, six hundred dollars.
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second, Ms. Ridge.
So we maintain an inventory of approximately thirty-five hundred to four thousand culverts in our county. So anything that's less than twenty feet in length is not considered a bridge. So we do a small structure inventory every five years so we can keep up on the maintenance and replacements of those culverts. So this is our renewal of that agreement for the twenty twenty-three.
Right, thank you so much, comments, questions, Commissioner Gissens?
No, thank you.
Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't.
So this process lasts pretty much throughout the year because they're gonna have to go, but they're gonna inspect everything.
They'll expect to inspect everything, we have a minimum length that we have them inspect up to that twenty-foot length that would be a bridge and that would be in our other inventory that's inspected.
Great, thank you so much. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Raise your hand on the Zoom screen or come to the podium in Nat U Hill. Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the Agreement with Bean Longest Enough for Small Structure Inspections signify by saying aye. Aye, motion carries, next item, please.
Move approval of Nature's Way Service Agreement for Roger Street Roundabout Landscaping. Fun name, twenty nineteen Geo Bond and County General. Fun numbers forty-eight, twelve and one thousand, in an amount of two hundred sixty-six thousand, one hundred ten dollars.
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second. We've already seen a preview of this, but anything else you want to add?
Nope.
Okay, excited to move forward and get the project completed, excellent. You know, and this really worked out well with you taking the reins and doing sort of GC, general contracting. It took a lot more work and I cannot thank you enough for keeping this going because the initial bid was so high and really made this project happen, so thank you for that. I will note that Ms. Mary Ann Williams, a Bana Neighborhood Association person, has posted a chat that says, "Thank you so very much for sustaining this project along with the new library. This new landscaping will contribute to a sense of place in southwest Bloomington." Excellent, well said. And again, huge thanks to everyone who helped throughout that process. It was really a great collaborative process and so grateful to have the input from the folks who are going to live near it and see it every day. That really meant a great deal. Let's see if there's any other public comment on this item? Did you have questions?
No, I just want to comment on the wonderful community input that it was just amazing to be at the meetings with people and have people making very valid recommendations.
Yeah, I just, I think that the community really appreciates this and I think it actually had the effect of bringing that community closer together as they worked on this project, which certainly, I think, helps make a huge new road in their neighborhood, much more palatable.
And really, they came together initially because of Fullerton Pike and they would coalesce and talk through commentary and they make great suggestions, I think, on that project. And then just keeping them engaged in this process has been wonderful. And really, the image is gorgeous and I can't wait to see it. It's really, really beautiful and Nature's Way was here, but I know they had to leave, but we look forward to working with them as well. So any other public comment on this item? Raise your hand on the Zoom screen. All right, seeing none, all those in favor of approving the Agreement, Service Agreement with Nature's Way for the Roger Street Roundabout signify by saying aye. Aye, motion carries three zero, next item, please.
Move approval of NDOT Change Order Number Twenty-three Fullerton Pike Phase One. Fun name, Fullerton Pike, Fun Number eighty-one sixty-nine, in an amount of five hundred seventy-four thousand dollars. I'm sorry, five hundred seventy-four thousand, seven hundred and eleven dollars and fifty-one cents.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second, Ms. Ridge.
The change order is submitted by the contractor for utility delays that were on Fullerton Pike Phase One. We finally reached a settlement between NDOT, the contractor, and Monroe County. NDOT has agreed to pay eighty percent of this change order. So Monroe County's responsibility will be the twenty percent, which will be a hundred and fourteen thousand, nine hundred and forty-four dollars and fifty cents.
Thank you so much, comments, questions, Commissioner Gissens?
Well, I know that people that were driving through there were very inconvenienced by these utility delays as well. And I think we need to figure out ways to hold the utilities' feet to the fire, as it were.
I will say, I think this project kind of stood out as a, as seeing a problem and what it can cost at county. Thankful that NDOT stepped up to pay eighty percent of it, otherwise it would have fallen on the responsibility of Monroe County. And that would take away from our other projects. But we have started a joint collaboration group with Duke Energy. We meet once a month now between the city of Bloomington, parks, the county, discussing all the projects that's going on, the timelines for the projects so that we don't run into a situation like this again. We've also on our Curry Pike project and our Sample Road project, we started utility collaboration update meetings every two weeks, once that project goes to letting so that we can, and even before letting, to get the utilities out of the way for the contractor to be able to start. So we're doing everything in our power that we will never run into a change order of this magnitude again.
Commissioner Jones?
Yeah, I want to thank you for the agreement with NDOT, I'm sure that's been very helpful and utilities have been pretty annoying in these projects.
I appreciate, yes, that you were able to get this agreement because that was our bill and I'm really grateful that NDOT stepped up, so thank you to them. And, you know, and I think, I think having these regular meetings with utilities is a fabulous idea. It's a great way to make lemonades out of lemon, so thank you.
All right, let's see if there's any public comments on this item. Raise your hand on the Zoom screen or come to the podium in Nat U Hill. Seeing none, all those in favor of approving NDOT Change Order Number Twenty-three Fullerton Pike Phase One signify by saying aye. Aye, motion carries three zero, right, next item, please.
Move approval of Ordinance twenty twenty-two dash thirty-two PNG Planned Unit Development Outline Plan.
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second, Ms. Karsilius.
Good morning. Good morning. So this petition is located at fifty-one hundred West Victor Pike in Perry Township, Section twenty-nine. The property is four point nine acres and is developed and operating as a Sunco gas station. The site is accessed from South Victor Pike and is approximately five hundred feet from the intersection of South Victor Pike and South State Road Thirty-seven. It's approximately point one mile from the convergence of State Road Thirty-seven and Interstate Sixty-nine and it's located approximately point three miles north of the Doman Road Wastewater Treatment Plant. The property is zoned pre-existing. The property is zoned preexisting business, which was created in 1997 under the 1997 ordinance and is intended to accommodate commercial and business service uses that were in operation prior to the adoption of the zoning ordinance. So the petition site is adjacent to the agricultural zone, Agar, our residential zoning, like estate residential one, light industrial, heavy industrial, and other sites zoned preexisting business. The Monroe County Urbanizing Area Phase One identified this site as employment, which supports employment oriented uses, including light industrial, manufacturing and assembly, research and development facilities, flex office space, construction trades, warehousing, and other types of commercial uses. Phase two identified this area as south side employment, which within this district includes lands with access to and high visibility from I-69 or State Road 37 and was designated as employment area under Phase One. Currently, a lot of this area is largely undeveloped with some existing office and industrial development and rural residential uses. It does state that additional development should preserve landscape character and be sensitively buffered from nearby residential districts. So I'm just going to run through a few site photos from, that was taken last year during the summer of 2021. So this is the current convenience mart and gas station. So this is frontage along South Victor Pike, looking west towards State Road 37. There are two fuel canopies on site. Portions of the property are paved and portions are gravel. So the earliest aerial imagery available is from 1998, showing the use of a convenience store and daytime truck parking. The current property report card lists 1990 as the construction date of the building and fuel canopy. Imagery from 2003, 2005 shows the site in its current state that has generally remained the same for the last 20 years. In 2019, the planning department received a complaint regarding the site's brightness of exterior lights and truck idling and some removal of trees located in a corner. So upon staff review, there had been expansion of the parking area in the northeast side or the upper right corner of the photo, which is highlighted in yellow. The zoning inspector requested and received a use determination submission. The planning director at the time, Larry Wilson, determined that the site was previously a legal preexisting nonconforming use of convenience store. Mr. Wilson determined that the preexisting nonconforming uses plus overnight parking would either have to be qualified as a truck stop travel plaza or a trucking terminal as defined under Chapter 802. Neither use is permitted in the preexisting business district. So the site was unable to meet the conditions of either use, which could have been allowed, allowed them to seek a rezone to a different district. So the only planning process available that would allow the combinations of uses on the site were to seek a rezone to the planning unit development. So on the screen is an image, a table provided by the petitioner during discussion of this petition at Plan Review Committee and Plan Commission. We sometimes referred back to the use of a truck stop travel plaza or trucking terminal. The petitioner stated that the proposed uses that they're, you know, proposing within the planning unit outline do not resemble the extensive and intensive uses identified under a truck stop or trucking terminal conditional use that's already permitted in Chapter 813. So this illustration shows the uses that are allowed under a trucking terminal under our ordinance currently and the uses that they're proposing and are on site. So the proposed uses for the outline plan, they've defined a use called truck stop small. They state the character of the PUD would allow these uses because it represents the travel and vehicle uses adjacent to a principal arterial road. There is no existing zoning that would allow the proposed mix of uses. The outline plan has provided design standards for the above uses and additionally, they've defined limitations on the expansion and intensification of these uses. So these uses would be a convenient mart food service, which is existing, a restaurant small, which is not necessarily existing as they do have food service and already in the convenience mart. They have proposed the idea of expanding that food service into a more sit down, sit down area, like what we would maybe call a restaurant small within the existing footprint of the building. Fuel sales, which is existing, electric vehicle charging stations, which would be a proposed new use, possibly parking of overnight and transient parking, seasonal work crew parking and ride share parking. So we do see the ride share and the seasonal work crew parking as uses that have existed on the site. The overnight parking and the transient parking of trucks would be one of the more uses that wouldn't be permitted on the site now that they're proposing. And then they're proposing accessory uses of seasonal sales like produce or firewood and also proposing a possible expansion of the existing structure to have a small residential dwelling. So some of the, some of the design standards and self limiting standards that they've provided within the outline plan is kind of outlining some of the uses and outlining where it's allowed. For example, they would limit, you know, the possible use of expanding to a restaurant small, of not to exceed 1,000 square feet within the existing footprint of the structure. They've proposed the idea of only possibly expanding a second story addition to the existing structure. Again, no change to the footprint. They've outlined the existing fuel canopies of essentially their existing square footage. So no expansion there and so on. Further parking, they are proposing that some areas remain gravel and that some areas are paved and striped with small signage to designate truck parking. And they did include detail that, you know, they would have to complete any paving within 12 months if the petition was approved. So they do outline how much parking space they'd like to include within the PUD. So they've included 30 spaces for truck parking, equipment, 10 spaces, carpool, ride share, 25 spaces. They've also included designated green space, which is a minimum of 25% of the property. This is required under the PUD chapter under the zoning ordinance. It would possibly be an easement dedicated to the plant commission or a designee with the owner to main landscaping. They've proposed the idea or allowed the potential use or new structure that would be a small shelter house, exterior seating with a picnic table. Small error on the side, it says six to eight picnic tables. It would be smaller than that. It would be a six to eight person picnic table singular. They've also outlined some landscaping and where they would require that landscaping along the boundary. These, so currently, some of these areas, this could be considered existing. Plantings along Victor Pike would definitely, this would be an increase of trees that would be required to be planted. So the Plan Review Committee heard this last year in June. Some of the discussion included concerns regarding safety of drivers through Monroe County with the limited resources for overnight parking. The illustration that is in Exhibit Three and here on the side is just currently, some of that discussion staff looked into it and that this site is currently the only location with overnight parking in Monroe County as designated by a few different sources of places to overnight park for truckers. The Plan Committee, the Plan Review Committee, really kind of just discussed the lack of rest stops along I-69 when construction took place. Okay, and let's see. So the Historic Preservation Board heard this in June as well. Across the, across South Victor Pike is a property with the, with a historic preservation overlay of an older farm called the Stipender Farm. So discussion included neighbor concerns and potential impact to the view shed of the Stipender Farm. The Stipender Farm does have an application pending at the state for a national historic registration, register nomination that was submitted last year. And as of this summer, we have not seen an update on that application. So the first preliminary hearing by the Plan Commission was last year in July and there was some information that was requested. So we reviewed the conditions of the truck stop travel plaza requirements under the conditional use because there was, we, the Plan Commission discussed, are there alternative areas that could be, you know, a truck stop travel plaza? So we used, staff used those requirements to do a spatial analysis into the potential locations. And the conclusion was that there are very limited existing locations that would meet all the criteria for a truck stop travel plaza. There are limited areas that are zoned heavy industrial. Of the ultimate result is that there was only one possible site that was considered vacant, that met most of the criteria. Ultimately, the exist, the site would most likely not be pursued and is currently not for sale. So the Plan Commission had a final hearing this year in August. There was a delay from last year to this year. The petitioner used their, allowed three continuances under the Plan Commission rules of procedure and then they requested by the Plan Commission to be continued and the Plan Commission did allow them to continue. So there's been some time. So final hearing was in August. There was more discussion and ultimately, the Plan Commission voted six to one to send no recommendation to the commissioners. So we've received a lot of support and remonstrance about this petition. Ultimately, we've seen a lot of support. So there, we've received lots of emails and letters of the supporters. There were 16 individuals signed. We've also seen two different signature petitions with slightly different wording that have been collected, one last year and one, and one just recently this year. As for remonstrators, we have eight individuals that have, you know, been very consistent. So overwhelmingly, we've seen very positive support for allowing the existing uses to continue on the site and to allow overnight truck parking. Some of the points of the support and remonstrance are listed on the screen. So support is just recognizing that there's a lot of, you know, long haul trucking, that drivers do not have access to a safe rest stop. That trucks newer than 2010 have little no fuel fumes. And some of that remonstrance is about idling diesel exhaust, traffic on Victor Pike from State 37 turning on to Victor Pike to, to go to the site and the nuisance of noise and trucks and the vibration. So included here, which I will not read out, is just for your reference, the requirements of approval for a PUD from Chapter 811. So if at any point we want to look at those, I absolutely can read them off. Okay, so staff has met with the petitioners and their representative as recently of June, as June this year, to discuss the outline plan and standards of approval for PUD. Staff had identified three points that would need to be adopted or addressed in order to gain staff support. So some of those that were included with the original Plan Commission recommendation, so in order for staff to recommend approval at that time was to, we were recommending the following three points, which was to prohibit overnight truck parking from idling, that the petitioner proposed a landscaping plan that includes screening of the view shed of the adjacent historic property that may or may not be able to be achieved under their current landscaping design standards. They do outline at least 12 trees to be planted along the boundary of South Victor Pike. And then the third point would be that the entirety of the parking lot to be paved per Chapter 806 standards and that the parking plan would be reviewed by the county highway engineer. So ultimately, staff does recommend denying the rezone request from preexisting business to a planned unit development based on the findings of fact and subject to the Monroe County Highway Department MS4 coordinator reports. Ultimately, the, the use of the convenience store is preexisting nonconforming and can continue. The use of overnight truck parking would have to be, would have to stop on the petition site if this petition was to be denied. So if anybody has any questions for me, I'd love to, love to answer them.
Thank you so much, Ms. Krsilis. Comments, questions? Commissioner Giffens?
Well, I went through the signature pages that we were in our packet and many of these petitioners do not live in Monroe County. So I don't consider those part of the numbers that we should be reflecting on here. I'm also worried about the drainage that paving over things creates and the fact that the Planning Commission forwarded this with no recommendation. Yeah, thank you.
Commissioner Jones?
Yeah, I do want, I feel that it is a little dangerous to not have any truck stops for 100 miles that if that led to a lot more accidents, it would be very unfortunate. At the same time, I can see problems with this and I'm not sure that I can really support it as it is.
Yeah. And, and I will add that NDOT's failure to create rest areas on I-69 because they wanted to save money is, doesn't make it our responsibility or anyone else's to create them. But Walmart is an available space on Second Street. But I also am pretty sure that we're going to see truck stops in Green County and probably Oregon County coming in fairly soon as they're finishing that leg of I-69. So that may be a better fit because it is directly off the highway as well, instead of off a secondary ancillary road. I know there's, you know, some, you know, cool items in here like, oh, we could put in some electric carb. You know, you could do that. You could probably find a way to do that anyway. If you really wanted to do that. I don't, I'm not going to be persuaded by that. It's a night, it would be a great thing to do, but it doesn't take this petition to do it. So I do have a lot of concerns, especially with the fact that this is a neighborhood. I feel like I understand and totally appreciate somebody getting the full value out of their property, but they can't do so by overusing the property. And it's just not the right place. It's just not the right place. And that's unfortunate. But I do want to hear from, we want to hear from the petitioner, petitioner's representative. We have Mr. Carmen here.
Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Mike Carmen, representing the petitioner. Listen to your comments. This is discouraging because it certainly sounded like I'm wasting my time standing here, but I'm going to take a few minutes to speak anyway. I'm a little concerned about counting noses because we're going to count noses. Need to recognize that the eight remonstrators or objectors, I think six of those are couples, husband and wife. And so, you know, it's, there's absolutely overwhelming community support for this in the neighborhood. Objectors, for large part, were in the neighborhood. But aside from the petition, I understand that people coming through, some of those were just people driving, stopped for gas or fuel, got a snack, food, signed the statement and drove on to wherever they're going. A lot of those people were Monroe County residents. The neighborhood largely cannot support of it. The letters, the emails that came in, for the most part, are from Nate, from people in the neighborhood, right next door to the objectors. The objectors, by the way, just moved there with one exception, but they came there with this already in place. They all came to this. This wasn't developed after they had their homes there. They bought their homes with this in place because this has been in place since 1988 through three owners. Now, I'll admit that when I first started on this petition with the, with this petitioner, even through the first Plan Commission meeting about this, I undervalue the business importance of this. So I tried to correct that in a prior meeting, but I will repeat it here. It wasn't until I spoke to Beverly Terry, who was her husband Alan Terry, now deceased, they started this. Her sworn statement, I put it into, give some history of the property, the development of it, why Alan thought a truck stop was appropriate and was a need and how this developed there. give some history of the property, the development of it, why Alan thought a truck stop was appropriate and was a need and how this developed there. But it was not until she talked about, it was an intentional effort to court the truck parking because of what it added to fuel sales and purchases from their convenience mark there. They started out basically with workwear clothing and other items not what we see today as a convenience store. And then talked to Bill Thomas, he and his partner bought it from the Terrys and they continued the truck parking use for the same reason. It was an important source of revenue, among other reasons of providing that trucking, safe truck parking place. And then when PG Associates, Tarian and Rosie Pilo purchased the property, they have continued. This has been an un- uninterrupted use for over thirty years. And it has not harmed the neighborhood. They've heard this thrive and prosper with this right there. If this PUD gets denied, the station does not go away. The signage does not go away. Nothing goes away except some truck parking. And, and that's not only an important revenue source, but is also a safety issue. You know, everything you do, your authorities often go back to the police power and, and you don't, you don't need a lecture from me on, on, on law, but I think you probably were, were well of it. The override principle for every ordinance you adopt, everything that you do is within the police power, meaning things for the public safety, good morals, care, there's several adages that go in there, but the safety in fact is one. It's not just a business issue for the petitioner. It is also a safety issue. This is a great place for this limited truck parking and very limited truck parking. We're right on, we're on controlled intersection, traffic signal controlled, four lane divided. Close proximity to access I sixty nine. It's a good place to do it. The truck traffic doesn't pass through the neighborhood. It's between the neighborhood and State Road thirty seven, not passing through it so that we say five hundred feet off past the distance from thirty seven right away or the paving to the entrance to this. So it's that with nothing in between. Monroe County, you know, you're kind of turning out going disagree on this point and there are some legal issues being debated and argued through other venues, but it's my, certainly it's my belief that the evidence clearly demonstrates that the Monroe County Plan Commission, the Monroe County Board of Commissioners knew of the off-site truck parking in nineteen ninety one, nineteen ninety, nineteen ninety one and blessed it. Now, they'll say, how, how could that be? In nineteen ninety, when Alan Terry was operating this, they'd only been up for a couple of years. Your then zoning inspector, Amy Freyly issued a letter of notice violation. I believe that led to the packet. You probably had to see it, but if you, if, if not, just be quick about it. She, there was a problem of, of, in her words, in that letter of, of the volume of truck and automobile parking on this parking lot, off-street on this parking lot. And because that volume, most of it was stone surface, not paved. It was, it became a dust problem. And so there's an ordinance violation issue ultimately leading to a lawsuit that David Schilling filed against Alan Terry zoning violations that ultimately resulted in Mr. Terry paving designated portions of the lot in a phased basis. But the fact that it was truck parking going on there was clearly known. It was commented upon in the notice violation letter. When this, when this use is identified, I have objected to the use of truck stop for this, but I'm, I'm going to put object into that. And I'll come back to that in just a moment. But every reference to this property, this site, even in the county records was a truck stop. And when they took an ordinance violation lawsuit against Mr. Terry dealing with paving of the parking lot and did not address truck parking as an ordinance violation, not a permitted use that needed to stop, absolutely did nothing. And they, and the board of commissioners, the plan commission both agreed with that. And in fact, the lawsuit then was settled and ultimately dismissed on the commitment to do the paving to deal with the stone surface versus the paving surface on this parking lot, which is what they called it. Now, the reason I've objected to the term truck stop, well, that's what Alan Terry called it. That's what websites have called it. That's what everybody calls it. I object to it for exactly what you've been talking about for a few minutes and what Anne included in presentation. At that time, there was no definition of a truck stop. You now have a definition of a travel plaza truck stop that is so far different from this use that it's unfair to call it a truck stop because that conjures up something else. And I, I had the opportunity to talk about that travel plaza ordinance and that definition with Larry Wilson, planning director at the time, before you adopted that as part of the ordinance. And he was, he made no bones about it. I sixty nine is coming through here. It's not going to stop. There are going to be people targeting some of our land for track stops, travel plazas. We're going to get ahead of the game. We're going to create a travel plaza truck stop ordinance that's going to basically not allow it to happen. And it won't. There, you can, there is no property in this county that can meet the criteria required for those. But look at what those allow, lodging, internet cafes, fleet service, vehicle service and maintenance. Things that there, that is not designed for. And that's why this PUD, there is this, that ordinance would not fit for this. We have no desire to put lodging on there for truck drivers or for anyone other than the one limited restriction. We have no desire to engage in vehicle maintenance and services. Those things that are traditional part of the uses on truck stop travel plaza. That's why I called it truck top small. If you're, if everybody's going to call it a truck stop, okay, fine. But it's not the truck stop as you envision it, as you define it in the ordinance. It's something wholly different. So let's just put the word small on it because all this is, is allows some truck parking. Now, what, one of my regrets in the way this petition has been handled is that issue of engine idling appears to be of some concern. It certainly is a concern for a couple of neighbors. Other neighbors say not an issue. They don't hear it. They claim about fuel smells. There's a great disagreement about that. And that's been clear from very early on in this petition, which has been a long protracted process. So my regret is no one has found that an important enough issue to even check it out. I have, I have with my client, we've gone out there and he has, has been extensive efforts inspecting the site at night, early evening after, you know, seven, seven thirty and sometimes later. After trucks basically are off the road for the evening, they're stopping for their hours of driving opportunities are done for the day. They have to park, get off the road and they stop here to do it. They'll fuel up in the morning. But I'm not going out to interview the drivers. Why are you parking here? What's going on with engine idling? What's, what is happening these days? Because the industry, the trucking industry has changed. The newer trucks, most of the trucks you can find on the road do not idle engines at night. They, they have a power pack. And the reason they have the power pack is it's a small motor, but it's not the engine idling. The, 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 on the eighteen wheeler engine, that motor on the, on that cab. They burn an hour of diesel fuel, a gallon at least for an hour when they idle the engine. The power packs that they use if necessary for HVAC, for either air conditioner or heat, depending on the time of the year, burns, it's rated to burn a tenth of a gallon. The driver told me is, he thinks it's a little bit more than that, but basically it's, it's by rating is supposed to burn no more than a tenth. So it's a fuel issue, if nothing else. It also is a noise issue. The power packs, you can hear them when I stand next to a truck talking to him. I walked thirty feet away and I couldn't hear it. Pilo, the petitioner, went out and surveyed how many trucks riding an engine one night and had seventeen trucks parked. There were three engines idling. He walks down to the end of the parking lot and couldn't hear him. He had to go back down and check again to make sure how many are idling because he could not protect it from the end of the parking lot. Issue of engine idling and noise is not, is an issue. The diesel fuels have changed and now I've had this DEF to it. DEF is the acronym. It, it, they use a burner. It's the equivalent of a catalytic converter on an automobile and a sedan. So it re burns the diesel exhaust, which between that re burning and use the DEF, the, the old traditional diesel fuel smell that everybody gray hairs we grew up knowing about and smelling in the air is, is, is not there. So the, the issue has changed. Regardless, engine idling to the extent it has been, has been ongoing through all these years. It's not some recent phenomenon. And yet the neighborhood grew, people bought homes, sold homes and, and the neighborhood has thrived and developed with all that going on. And today it's a small fraction of what it had been in the past. The it's just, this is a good use for this property and this, this property. I want to clear, just, I'll try to be clear. I'm sorry. The issue of residential use is hard to detect it in there. And so I just want to make sure it's clear. We're not looking to add residential use to the property. This is the PUD proposal and then a PUD, you have to identify all the uses that you might do or what would, would want to have lateral in this. We had to list other possibilities, even though we're not doing that. I actually don't have any plans to do now, but things that we think would be an important opportunity at some point for the owner of this property, one of which was to authorize a single apartment to be added to the existing building restricted to, and it's, it's in the materials, restricted to owner or employee occupancy. Clearly, it is the possibility that someday either a station manager working there would choose to live on site in the small and a small apartment that could be added to the building, second floor, not increasing the footprint. Or the, an owner of the property could, it probably could be sold to an owner who wants to own, operate it and wants to live right there. And so the possibility of a single rep, single apartment residential use, but restricted to owner or employee occupancy. So it's a minor issue. The, I, I, I am very concerned when I hear statements about the view shed and for the view shed. I mean, that's adding an, an element that's undefined to your consideration for this zone and then for any others. But the bigger concern is the view shed, whatever that really means, and I'm not certain I understand. Yeah, I can stand at the, the farmer look and whatever I see, if that's the view shed, okay. But the view shed is not, is not changed in almost thirty years and it's not going to change after today, no matter what you do or don't do. Because the, the building's there, the sign's there, everything is there as it has been and as it will continue. You deny the PUD. Nothing goes away except the, the truck parking. And that's the, the area for truck parking, being on the east side and northeast side of the property is hard, is not really in the view shed all anyway. Nothing changes on the view shed issues, never, no matter what you decide. So there, I'm, I would submit, this petition deserves to be approved. There is an important business issue. It's a safety issue for providing a place for drivers. And my last comment about a driver, I had one driver get, I thought I was going to be in trouble with material. He, he was so angry at me when I was talking to him that he calmed down. But when I told him, well, I'm not sure you're going to be allowed to park here any longer. And he exploded, literally exploded and got somewhat profane with, how do you people, meaning Monroe County generally, expect to get your, go to your store and buy the things that you want to buy if I can't deliver it there? Now I've got a delivery to make to a certain store in town at seven o'clock tomorrow morning. If I can't, you're telling me I can't park here. So I'm here on site. I go make my delivery and unload at seven in the morning. Then I'm on my way. Then if you don't want me to park here, then you don't need to go buy anything. I mean, he was very unhappy, somewhat irrational, I understand that. But the point I think is legitimate. It is a need for this. And to say they can go to Green County, they can go to Walmart, doesn't change anything. If, if it's appropriate use in Green County, why is it not appropriate use here? It's a safe place to do it. Historically, it's been there in use and the county has known about it for thirty years and allowed it to continue. And now you want to say, in the form of a notice letter from planning of not, of not a permitted use, but now after thirty years you want to say you can't do this. Where, where they been? You've been there and have known this all this time. You, your predecessors as plan commission, we should have known about it, would ask you to prove the ordinance. It's a very limited use issue of restricted defined limit number of parking spaces for trucks to, to continue with that business model of promoting the fuel sales and other purchases on site as well as providing a safety issue for getting drivers off the road. Because they'll park wherever they can. You've seen them, shoulders, berms, wherever they park. They're not going to drive two miles away to go to Walmart when, if they don't, if they can. When I asked the one driver about, well, can't you go park it? I think I asked him about Sam's, but I think it was a site and he objected to that. Oh, I don't want to go that far off the road. Why don't I do it? I want to do it right here where I can fuel up right here very easily in the morning as I'm leaving and this works great. This is a good place for me to do it. I don't have to get very far off the road. Your entrance is right here. Why can I not continue to do this? With you at the same question, why can we not continue to do what's been being done for thirty years?
All right, thank you. We certainly appreciate your input. And the reason we raise objections is not to disappoint or concern anyone. But it's so that you know what our concerns are and you can address. So that's why we do that. But let's see if there's anyone else who wishes to speak in favor of this petition. You raise your hand on the Zoom screen. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to this petition? Raise your hand on the Zoom screen. Right, we have Guy Loffman. Who I know is a Monroe County resident. So I want to ask him.
My name is Guy Loffman and I, I live, I've lived at forty eight thirty five South Victor Pike since nineteen seventy four. We are less than a quarter mile toward Bloomington and downhill from, from this business. And we are neighbors. We are in the same neighborhood. And this convenience store is good for our neighborhood. It's convenient. But overnight parking is not good for our neighborhood. It decreases our quality of life, noise, light, traffic, air pollution, ugly. We don't want our evenings disrupted with this kind of, of additional use. As you've stated, they can go to Walmart. It's a little inconvenient for them. It's very inconvenient and negative for the community where we live. Petitioners don't charge for overnight parking. They don't need overnight parking. They acknowledge that their store will remain open even if overnight parking remains prohibited. A prior non-conforming use should not be intensified through the back door of planned unit development. Allowing overnight truck parking would be an intensification. Petitioners have violated their restrictions for years. Violation of restrictions should not be rewarded by removing restrictions. I rarely quote Nancy Rigan, but in this case I will ask you to just say no. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Loffman. We have Margaret Clements joining us.
Well, good morning, commissioners and members of the public and Mr. Carmen. I would, I am a Monroe County resident. My name is Margaret Clements. And I would urge you to vote no on this petition, although Mr. Carmen made the strongest arguments possible for supporting this petition. There are some problems with, with the issue at hand. And I think a strong one was just proffered by Mr. Guy Loffman that a pre-existing non-conforming use should not be rewarded by removing restrictions. The reason we have zoning is to control the shaping of our community, not to allow people to change according to the owner's will and evolve into something that no one foresaw or wanted in the first place. And even though this non-conforming use has been in existence since nineteen ninety one, as Mr. Carmen has stated, that a truck stop is not the same thing today as it was more than thirty years ago. There've been so many changes and there've been changes in our community. Not only have, have we in our community had to endure, you know, the I sixty nine without planning for truck stops along the corridor. But we have experienced as a nation, the massification of our sales industry with the kind of the Amazonification and the Walmartification of our goods and services. And so that means an intensification of trucking. And that intensification means that even a trucking terminal or a truck stop that existed in nineteen ninety one is not the same thing as it is today in twenty twenty two. And in fact, even the nature of truck stops has changed over that thirty year period. As an example, I think Pilot and Flying J merged into one corporation in two thousand and ten. In two thousand and seven, Travel Center of America acquired Petro. And the truck stops and overnight truck stops have changed dramatically over the last thirty years. And I think that it's too much of a burden on the neighborhoods we've been trying to help build over in that corridor. And I would argue that, that this convenience And I would argue that, that this convenience store is not the appropriate place for a truck stop. And I just would urge you to vote no on this item. And I thank you for your time and for your deliberation. It doesn't meet the regulations for the PUD as well pointed out in the packet as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Clements. Anyone else have comments? Positive or negative? Raise your hand on the Zoom screen. Did you have anything you wanted to add, Mr. Carmen?
Do my best not to just repeat myself. So I actually, Margaret's comments highlight why I, for a while fought using the word truck stop because you see what she did. She, she's saying this is not a perfect place for a truck stop, refers to Flying J and Pilot having absolutely zero relationship to what we're talking about here. I wish I'd have called this a convenience store plus. Would that have made a difference? We said it's just a convenience store that also allows a little bit of truck parking. Would that have changed anything? It's just a name. It's, the concept of truck stop seems to be an, an obstacle I cannot get past because it conjures up things that are not part of this petition would not be allowed. And the only other comment then, really because Margaret and Guy Loffman both alluded to it about intensification. There is no intensification being proposed here. It's exactly, it's maintaining what has been being done for thirty years, not intensifying. Intensification on paper, if you say, well, it's its own pre-existing business and that doesn't cover truck parking, so you're intensifying, that's a paper issue, but it's not a fact. Because the fact is the truck parking that they're talking about has been in existence all this time. So it's not an intensification. And so that, you know, I think your obligations as a, as what commissioners is to more than just a couple of people. Your obligations is, is in many respects, but much broader. It's not only to treat land use issues fairly and appropriately with regard to the petition in front of you, but factors such as safety, driver's safety, the convenience, the, the impact on the, the economy locally with the truck traffic needing to place to park, those are all appropriate factors. And, you know, even Guy, I mean, you know, Guy's an attorney, you know, he's now retired. He's been there, as I said, there's one exception. The guy's the exception of the last three as I'm aware of, who there before this was developed. Everybody else has come after. And you guys, the guy was the exception to that. But if this quality of life issue was so disrupted by this, where's he been for thirty years? He's an attorney. He knows what he's doing. When did he come to you or to go to planning, anybody? Talk about not improper uses, non-permitted uses, adverse impacts, but he didn't. Because it's not that much of an issue. And it's not an issue at all. Yes, I agree. The industry's changing. So much is changing. Last comment is, and so there's no, I want to be clear about the electrification issue. The, the oil companies themselves are looking at getting into electric charging stations. That, that's for vehicles. That is a different issue than, and the only reason we listed, it's not a question of whether we can do it any way where this gets approved or not. It's because this was proposed as a PUD that I don't, could not get in the trap of trying to do something later that somebody says, well, that's not on your list of use on PUD. You can't do it. So we had to listen. That, so regardless, that is actually not the electrification issue for, for the trucks. Because some stations, it didn't survive long and it's not being, Indiana's never done it. It's not promoting it. Have plug-in arrangements. So that was one of the issues I, I asked a driver about when I did my inspection of the parking and talked to some of the drivers. It is why, why would, if we had electric plug-in stations here, would you make use of that? His comment was, how am I going to do that? My truck isn't equipped for that. His challenge to me was check any truck in this parking lot. You're not going to find a one of them that's equipped to be, be plugged in. They, they weren't manufactured with that equipment. The cost of trying to retrofit it in there is impossible. So no, put them, put your electric plug-in stations in here, but it means nothing to me. And I don't think it'll mean anything to any other driver. Those were his comments. And after seeing what I saw, I would agree with him. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Any final comments or any questions for staff?
I just agree that a prior non-conforming situation is not a, a reason to approve this.
Commissioner Jones?
Yeah, that's what I think also. And it, it just, I don't think it sets a good precedent to remove restrictions that have been violated for thirty years. And I don't think it's up to residents to complain or anything like that. It's hard to say what people were thinking in nineteen ninety-one or whenever it was. But things change a lot and they have. And I, I do not believe I can support this.
I would say, Mr. Carmen, you, you, you made the strongest argument just on a legal basis, which I get. And that, that is a strong argument. I think that one of the things that you started to talk about, which is the idea of safety and the general rule of planning, one of the things that always comes up is health and welfare of the community. And I think, you know, a case could be made either way for the decision supporting the health and welfare of the community. And it's sometimes in situations like this, you know, I was actually very glad to hear they're not going to be closing, that they're going to operate as a convenience store and a gas station. I'm glad to hear that. I know it's a, it's a good, successful business and I applaud them for their hard work. And so that actually makes me feel, you know, I was heartened by that because I, I, I'm glad they're going to stay in operation. But, but for me, anything a, that, that shouldn't be happening on that property should not be happening on that property. And overnight parking is it. And I'm not going to call it a truck stop. So overnight parking is not it. I appreciate you. And sometimes you have to be grateful for what you've been able to do and get away with for thirty years rather than complain that you're not able to continue to get away with it. You know, and, you know, I'm not, I'm not implying anything nefarious there. I'm, I'm just saying that sometimes you have to look back retroactively and say, well, we, we had parking for a while. We, we can't do that now. There are so many issues related to this overnight parking that are very concerning to me. And I just, I just don't see anything here that's, that's compelling to, to allow this to continue as it is. So with that, I'm going to actually ask Mr. Cockrell to do a roll call vote on ordinance twenty twenty-two dash thirty-two, please.
Commissioner Thomas?
No.
Commissioner Githens?
No.
Commissioner Jones?
No.
Motion is denied, three zero.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Okay. So we have a few announcements are trick-or-treat hours. Gosh, you can't believe that's already Monday, five-thirty to eight-thirty on Monday. Halloween, October thirty-first, hopeful, hopefully looking for good weather to everybody be safe driving out there, especially on Halloween night. There's the next blood drive is November ninth, one to six at Ivy Tech. Go to redcross.org to sign up. As was announced today, there'll be mobile vaccine clinic on Halloween day, October thirty-first, eight to four. And on November first, from ten to six, those are at Sherwood Oaks. And you can also contact our county health department clinic for information on making an appointment. Otherwise, that's at three five three three two four four to make an appointment at the mobile vax clinic at Sherwood Oaks on October thirty-first or November first. Go to ourshot.in.gov to sign up. We encourage as many Monroe County residents as possible to protect themselves and their families and the community at large. Think about others. We are still accepting board and commission applications, especially for next year. So go to co.monroe.in.us and sign up. And we do have office hours, six hours every month where you can communicate one-on-one with a member of the Board of Commissioners. Just go to co.monroe.in.us and look at the calendar at the bottom of the page. And for those of you who are at the website, if you haven't signed up yet, please sign up for the resident alert system. So you could stay on top of weather, health and other safety information, which can be sent to your text or email or both. And that's at the megaphone right in the middle of our homepage. And these, oh, and early voting. Yes, early voting. So let's see, this week, early voting, eight to six, Saturday, nine to four. And then Halloween week, eight to six. So that's next week, eight to six, Monday through Friday. And November fifth, which is a Saturday, nine to four. And November seventh is the last day of early voting, and that is from eight to noon. Just a reminder, election day is November eighth, six AM to six PM. Early voting takes place on the corner of Walnut and Third, right across from the bus station. Anything else I missed? Oh, good. All right. So we do have a few items for our work session. We're going to take a quick break before then. So we'll come back at five noon, okay? Noon, noon, good. We'll be back in about ten minutes to have the work session. Thanks, everyone.